Good evening, everyone. Sorry for the short room tonight. We're getting ready for the election tomorrow. Please remember to vote. I've got the feeling it's going to be a fairly light turnout. And remember you go to your regular polling places, is what I've been told. For the sake of time, what we're going to try to do, Councilor Wilson had conflict in a little bit, so going to start out looking at agenda items for tomorrow night. I didn't know if anyone had any particular questions. It's a fairly straightforward agenda. One is unfinished business on abatement, and we're going to public hearing for that. And I didn't see anything there. I think we were ready to go the last time to Leslie and Formis. We had not done our public hearing, so we backed out on that one.
The only thing on that is, it has recently been bought by a gentleman, from what I understand. However, that being said, I'd be curious because he said that he would tear the property down, but just to hedge our bets, not to say that he's not being honest and truthful, I just don't want to lose any ability to tear it down if he decides for some reason he doesn't want to tear it down. So how do we, I mean, if we have made it, do we just give him a certain amount of time to do it?
Well, we just go ahead and pass the resolution with thirty days started running. If he hasn't torn it down in thirty days, anytime after that date, the city can move him to go ahead and help through the process.
Okay.
If he says that he's going to do it, then you all may want to extend him some extra time to be able to do it.
Okay, cool.
I would say since we already have this process, we just go ahead, and if he does it, that's fine. That saves the city sixty-seven thousand dollars, so we wouldn't have to have him to tear it down.
Perfect, yeah.
What was the address?
It's the 2305 First South. It's that white old general store that's falling in. It's got a house attached to the back of it. It's been recently bought along with a couple of other properties on First South, and none of which are an issue.
I saw somebody down there cutting the grass.
Yeah, that would be him. That would be him, older, white male, gray hair. Yeah.
He was cutting two lots down there?
Yep.
Okay.
You being like a, just a whereabouts of where the, that particular store is?
The one that's on abatement?
Yeah.
That's the one I sent you pictures of, like a Google link. It's just right down. If we walk out, if you're looking at Public Works, down the left, to the 2300 block, that, that white house is falling there. So, yeah, I agree. I'd like to go ahead and keep it on the docket. I was just curious how that went. And I think he's going to be here tomorrow night, I believe.
I hope he's here tomorrow night to vote, but not for Council meetings.
Well...
Well, I still think it would move us to maybe move forward with it.
Yeah.
Third-day notice, and then allow him, that gives him time to do whatever he's going to do.
Yep.
Okay. How about the one that had the multiple houses on it? There is a list of, we've got the Resolution 2017R84. It has, what, fourteen properties?
That's all grass cutting. I think that's all grass cutting.
Just grass cutting?
Mm-hmm.
Yes.
So, anything on that?
Just need the city to go out and cut it and then bail the owner of the property back.
Is the, is the building still 200? What is the fund?
No, what that means, what this first resolution means, is that the city is giving them thirty days to cut the grass themselves.
Right.
Then if they do not cut the grass, the city will have another resolution after those thirty days, which will allow the city to own the property, to cut it. And it all depends on how many man-hours that Public Works has to put in. They have a call sheet.
Okay.
So they cost everything out by whatever it takes for them to be able to do with the man-hours and equipment and all of that stuff, so it varies.
For your references, generally a minimum of 200. It could go up to 500, depending on, maybe more, but probably the 200, 500 dollar range.
Okay.
Cheaper to tell yourself.
Yeah.
Do you have one or two of that?
I have one, if you desire it.
Okay.
You can just amend the resolution.
Huh?
You can just amend the resolution.
Yeah, 4052 Sherborn Road. I cut his, I cut the front yard forty-four laps, and the backyard. You'd get lost for me if you walked back there.
Is that 5042?
5042.
I'm not sure if our resolution...
4052, excuse me, 4052.
Does our resolution cover, our ordinance cover backyards?
It covers the yards, period.
The whole yard.
That's 4052 Sherborn Road.
I have one also. I don't know which one is.
4052. Yeah, one, one right up the hill from me. He's got a tank, it's overflowing too, but he's empty, so it's not overflowing at the moment.
Okay.
I can't get the county out there to do anything about that.
Mine's 5017 Yule Lane. 5017 Yule Lane, E-W-E-L-L.
5017.
5017 Yule Lane.
Okay, are there any additional on that then, or are we ready to move forward? Okay, next, on the petition for vacation right of way. Do we need an explanation on that, or was it pretty self-evident when you read it?
Mm-hmm.
Is there going to be any problem with that tomorrow night, or Thursday night, excuse me?
No.
There should be. Okay. And I believe that was all we had on the agenda?
I'd be curious on that. If we vacate that alley, I know a lot of people on the south side put their trash in the back, and the garbage truck goes back through there. Is that going to be, are they going to start putting their trash in the front yard now?
Yeah, the houses have been torn down. All those houses have been torn down.
Even on the opposite side of that alley?
The scoops on the other side.
There was two, two houses that was there. The county purchased both of them.
Right, I guess I was just misunderstood which is, which part of the, never mind.
It was the alley between those two houses and school.
Fair enough. I was thinking it was behind that, okay. Thank you.
Okay. So we are clear for Thursday night then on those items? All right, thank you. The next thing we were going to talk about was the abhorrent tax. Mind if we referred to our council just to make a quick comment on something we learned during the past week?
I'll be glad to. We looked at all the different taxes that the Irondale citizens are subject to, both local as well as county, state, and all the other taxes that impact property taxes. And because of several different limitations that we need to make sure and stay within, our recommendation is to not consider an increase that would be anywhere that, I believe we came up with, an additional six per...
Six mils.
Six mils.
Oh, six mils, because that would get us to twelve and a half mils locally. I'm looking at James to make sure that I'm saying it correctly. Doing that level, you don't hit any other caps that have a ripple effect on a variety of other issues that we would need to look at, but that's, that's the amount that you can get to without impacting, say, taxes that the county collects, the state collects. If you put it higher than that, then there would have to be a pro rate of reduction on all of the taxes because you would hit a limit that you're not allowed to exceed.
Mr. Stewart, go ahead, excuse me.
I don't understand why we need to raise property tax when we've got the new Maserati, the Alfa Romeo, just come online, which will bring a little bit in, and then you've got Mercedes that's potentially going to bring a great deal in over a period of time. Are these properties, are these businesses not going to bring in enough revenue to offset what we're, what's being considered raising the property tax?
Mr. Stewart, would you explain, number one, Mercedes deal, where that takes us?
I understand.
Now, another thing to consider too, Councilor Bearden, is remember, our rating for bond purposes is not necessarily based on our sales tax base. They put a lot of faith in what we do in property taxes because it is a fixed number. They do not put that much in the other. So if for any reason we start having a growth spurt and we need to go back to the bond market, we need something we can take to the bond market in spite of our current rating because we haven't been looked at for several years.
I think we're a little over bondy myself right now.
But again...
Several million dollars.
But again, that's one option. This will not be the only thing we're going to have to do. We're going to have to look at other options because this doesn't bring in, but potentially about, maybe nine hundred thousand dollars to the bottom line. Jefferson County gets a share of it, and they only collect about ninety percent. So this is not a panacea that solves all problems. But it is necessary if we want to address infrastructure issues and continue with programs. But, Mr. Stewart, you, you had a scenario where you looked at median house increase?
Yes, we took the medium house price in the city of Irondale, which is a hundred and twenty-eight thousand dollars. Currently, the total mileage is point zero five six six. So house value with that mileage would approximately be around seven hundred and twenty-four dollars a year.
Is that seven hundred total, or seven hundred in addition to what?
Seven hundred and twenty-four dollars total.
All right, that's, that's, it's current, right?
At the current rate.
Seven twenty-five.
Yes, and if anybody can figure out what their increase is going to be, I can give you all a quick formula if you all wanted, if you want to go home and run your own numbers, but you, you take the assessed value of your home, and you multiply it by ten, and then you multiply that amount by point zero five six six. That will give you your current tax rate. If you want to be able to tell what the difference is, you take the same assessed value, you multiply it by ten, but you multiply the mileage time point zero six two six, because we can only go up six mils. Currently, we are at fifty-six point six, and if we add six mils to it, we can go up to sixty-two point six. So if you take those two numbers and multiply them times your assessed value, it'll let you know exactly what would be the difference for your particular situation. But on that medium house in the city of Irondale, the increase would be seventy-seven dollars a month, a year, six dollars and forty-two cents a month, and twenty-one cents a day.
And, and remember, our job, we are not voting in a tax. We are trying to determine an amount to put to a referendum that will go to the people of Irondale to make that decision as to whether or not they're really to bear the burden of that tax, to continue services at least at the level they are, and to help the city move forward. But again, we have challenges as far as looking at everything from our current cost. Is everything we do necessary? We're going to have to look at a lot of revenue from other areas. We're going to have to look at expense cuts because that alone will not solve where we are financially at this time.
No, I'm just remembering the last time the property tax was raised. The council in session at that time said that the reason they were doing that was to prevent from going up sales tax in six months after the property tax. They went up on the sales tax opinion.
Well, I don't think we have an option.
They brought one scenario to us, and then turned around and did exactly what they said they weren't going to do. And I don't want to be in that situation again.
I don't think we have an option to increase our sales tax because we're at the top with everybody else in the area, so we couldn't afford to go above where we are now in sales tax. And remember, one-third of what Mercedes will produce is all we get for a period of time based on the deal that was struck. So Mercedes is not our panacea for several years to come. How many exactly, James, do you remember total? How many years do they get there, two-thirds?
Two-thirds, ten million dollars.
It was eight, eight point four or five years, I think, the last figures I saw.
No, they, they received ten million dollars capped at one million dollars a year. The city received one-third, and Mercedes receives two-thirds.
So now, okay, so they're capped at one million? Because the last thing I saw was one point seven million per year, and they'd get a third of that, two-thirds of that, the city'd get a third, and then her, the cap was...
Well, you can cap it at a billion dollars a year, or say for instance if the dealership makes twenty million dollars in the first three years, the city would get a third, they would get two-thirds, and if they receive ten million from that twenty million, then the city would receive every dollar after that.
Right. But they will be capped at one million per year, and everything above that per year of the city get. Is that right? One-third?
No, no. Say for instance if they generate two million, the city will get one-third. They would receive two-thirds, but that will increase the timeframe of them recovering the ten million dollars total. It's capped at ten million dollars total.
Right.
But they receive one, we receive one-third, and they get two-thirds.
Until you reach, until like...
Until you reach ten, ten million. Right, okay.
So there's, let me rephrase it. There's no one million dollar cap.
Okay.
It's just that, I apologize for that. But if they get to ten million, however they get to ten million, how quick they can get to ten million, then that's when the city, that probably you will receive everything.
They projected one point seven, and I, I think it worked out for eight, low over eight years at that rate.
One point seven what?
Million.
Over eight years?
Per year.
Per year.
No, per, one, before they get there, ten million. Eight, eight years and some odd months before they get to ten million at that, at the, at the one point seven percent tax that they projected.
Again, noting that will be a resolution on the first meeting in September for the referendum. And we will have to decide that night whether we agree with the referendum and the amount of tax recommended, or if we kill it at that point, or we do give a chance for it to go forward to the people of Irondale to make their choice. David, you...
I mean, I think it's, it's a no-brainer. I think a lot of people have spoken in favor of the property tax. They understand there's a lot of things that need to be done around the city, and I think most people are willing to put in a couple, you know, seventy-five extra dollars per year in order to help with that. I know we're going to have some pushback, but once again, we're not voting it in. We're simply offering up the opportunity for the community to say yes, or for the community to say no. I think it is responsible of us that we at least put it up for a vote. So that's just my thoughts on it. If it gets batted down, then it gets batted down. But at least we gave them an opportunity.
And going back, we will have a lot of education process ongoing before the actual referendum. There are plenty of earmarking that can be done already. We've got infrastructure issues with roads. We've got the sidewalk issue that we've got to resolve over a period of years. There's ways that money will be spent that we can let the public know if we need to earmark it. But we've got to proceed to get the referendum in the queue in order to make all the deadlines, or we're stalled for another four-year. Mr. Stewart, was the first meeting in September, I think, was our cutoff to really get in process?
Yes, because it takes anywhere from three, four months to be able to put the election on. If it was a special election, you can only do it on the first or third Tuesday of the month, is that correct, Leslie?
That's correct.
The first, third Tuesday of each month. So if we could get it done by the third Tuesday of the month, that gives us time to do whatever we have to do after the election, get it probated, get the information to the tax assessors, and then they can get it into the system before June the 30th. And if we get that information to them by June the 30th, when we begin to receive property tax in October of 2018, that increase will be a part of that revenue.
And remind me, James, this, any increase that comes from this can necessarily, obviously we have a deficit that we have to shore up. Once that's taken care of, if this, remind me, is, it can't go just straight to special projects? Doesn't it have to flow through various departments?
It all depends on how the council decides to divide the pipeline.
Okay.
And that will be a good job for the finance committee to start looking at pockets. The other thing on that counter side is start looking at where, if we do get some of these abatements going forward, where we'll find the monies on that, because that could be six to eight thousand or more per house. There are especially, I know we've got one, I think we were estimating maybe around as much as ten thousand, if it's got a pool and it's a large house, so it's not on the, it has made bottom list yet, but it will be there, and it will be there soon.
Thankfully, I know that Abbot's got fifty grand right now, I believe, and hopefully 2305 won't cost anything. So we've still got that going for us. But I agree with you as far as these abandoned properties.
And, Mr. Stewart, we'll begin with you. We're trying to come up with a simple financial format just presented each meeting to give the public and all the councils just the big numbers. We've got this much left, we've done this much, et cetera. So what have you come up with so far, I think, about?
Yeah, I brought a copy tonight, and also I sent to your email address a financial report for the month of July.
But it would be something you could look at and report on, but if you need a hard copy, yes, I have copies for everybody.
One of them is, one of them is a consolidated report. It's only a page, and the other report is about twelve pages, and it covers each department in detail.
So, you know, the good presentation would be the summary, and then basically you have detail if you need it.
I have hard copies if you want.
Yeah.
Is this one of them?
Yes.
All right. Councilor Bearden, I believe at last meeting, you wanted to discuss CDA candidates, and you may have, you will lead off that discussion tonight, excuse me.
Yeah, yes, I would. I, I think I'm the only one that asked a question of any of the CDA members, and I'll repeat my question so that everybody here understands where I'm coming from. CDA owns a building that it is collecting rent for from each month. I believe the city should be receiving that month, that monthly rent into the city's, city's general fund. If you're appointed to the CDA, or you work to have that rent returned to the city's general fund, or do you believe that CDA should continue to receive rent from that building? Now, the CDA collects approximately seventeen thousand dollars per month rent on a building. The city of Irondale floated a bond to purchase that building, and the city of Irondale paid for this building. It's in my opinion that the city should receive this rent, and it did for a number of years. About four years ago, some of the people in the CDA went down to the tenant and told, instructed him to quit sending the check to the city and to start sending it to the CDA. Well, over the last four years, the, the CDA's collected approximately eight, eight hundred thousand dollars. We currently have approximately two hundred and fifty thousand dollars in the bank, and as some of us know, that we have a, a secretary for the CDA that puts some of it in our pocket. So that leaves about five hundred and fifty thousand dollars that the CDA has spent in the last four years. Five hundred and fifty thousand dollars of what I believe is the city's money. Now, in the past, the city was, the CDA was given a budget of fifty thousand dollars by the city, and they operated on that budget quite well for a number of years. And I feel like that this rent should come back to the city, and that they should go back on to the budget that the, the council allot to them. Now, I got three responses from that question for the three different candidates. Cindy, I can, her, she didn't know about this, and I can understand her reply. She said that she would have to investigate it and get back, once she was on the CDA, when she had some information, if she got elected CDA. Then Aaron Sims said that he, he indicated that he knew about it, but he would like to investigate returning it to the CDA, but he didn't indicate whether he would or not. You know, when I got to Darrell Washington, from his reply, I understood that he wanted to keep the money and use it as a CDA saw fit. That's what I got from, from his answer now. I may have interpreted anyone or all of those incorrectly, but that's the way I interpreted the answer. And I intend to vote for the, for the candidates for the CDA according to that answer. And one of them, the answer that I got indicated that he wanted to keep the money, and that's not what I think should happen.
Could I, could I add to that, just something that may help you all? It's my understanding, and I was not in this position at the time, obviously, four years ago, right about after the time where you said the building was transferred, and that old administration of the CDA, for the most part, I think, were displaced.
They're, they're...
Am I saying it correctly? And then Newmans came in, and at that time of transition, there are records in the minutes where the, the new members coming in voted to return all the funds to the city that had, that were on hand at that point, and to transfer the lease and the proceeds from the lease back to the city. That's documented in the minutes. That has not happened. But I think for your discussion, that's help, should be helpful information. I know at least a couple of you are maybe are new to that. Three of you were involved with the council probably at the time that that happened, so it's probably all related to you. But that's, that's what I understand, the action of the CDA. The current CDA at that time took that they would return those funds to the city and the lease.
I feel like that, that should occur, and it's my opinion, if they refuse to do so, that we should dissolve the CDA and start up a...
Let, let me add a little bit to that, just to put a little bit more light on it. From what I can remember, when the new members were appointed to the CDA, instead of elected, we were giving, given a, some advice from our city attorney at that particular time stating that, based on some of the economic development that was pending at that time, it would have been a good idea to leave some of those funds in the CDA, with the CDA because of some of the transactions that may occur. As we are, well, as some of us may already know that, sometimes when we make economic development transactions through the CDA, there's not much red tape. And as far as red tape, you know, I, I can't get into details as far as business transactions, but the CDA is not as restricted to, to go out and venture out into business deals as the city. So therefore, upon the advice of our city attorney, that was mentioned to the city council. So that's why that money remained in the CDA. The CDA did agree to turn that money over at any time when the city requested those funds. So there never was an issue with the funds being turned over to the city. The fund stayed in the CDA based upon the advice that was given by the city attorney at that time. Let's correct it. Let's, let's make that very clear. And if we have to get him in here, or if we have to get his statement, then we need to do that. But we don't want to tell any kind of, you know, stories or whatever you want to call them, and it not be a fact.
Well, I'm just, I'm just, like the facts that are related to me.
Let me clarify. Mine was not a story. It was not hearsay.
Oh, no.
What I said was out of the minutes, okay? So that is the fact.
Yeah, but, well, we, yeah, we were fast.
Whatever conversations went on, I'm not privy to, but I know what the facts were according to the official meeting.
Right. Well, the fact is, and I don't know if we have it, but our city attorney stood here and mentioned it to all the counselors at that time that it was in the best interest at that time for the funds to stay where they were. And it never was a problem. And guys, I'm not the only one. Councilor Marino, you was on the CDA at that time now. You were on the CDA. Councilor London, you were here. You were here, and I was here. James, you was here also. There never was an issue, and I'm not going to beat a dead horse, but there never was an issue with the CDA turning money back over to the, to the council. Now, if it would have been, then I would have felt a certain type of way about it.
Well, the fact is, the money was never turned back over to the city.
Ask them. Ask them before, ask them.
Do you remember, I came home after all of that was done, I was laid down. Do you remember, I came home after all of that was done, I laid down. There were discussions at the CDA meeting about turning the money over to the city. But the common grounds of the people that had had the tenure at that point was if they would hold on to that money. I didn't know anything about the lawyer's opinion. It was just that that money could stay with the CDA. I think what, I guess the question is, did any of y'all look over the financials you got from the CDA?
Yes. I didn't. But I didn't see five hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
Well, you better remember, there was a brief repair in there for IP.
I was about to say, he was on the CDA.
There were things in there that were done. I'm talking about some of the more recent. We see some expenditures. I guess the question is, are we getting anything back for our money expended? So if we think about candidates.
But I looked through the P and Ls. I mean, yes, there's a lot of expenses on a P and L, but I see P and Ls from businesses all day long. My, I hate to be this frank, but I mean, my two-year-and-a-half-year-old daughter could develop a P and L that would look fantastic. So I mean, that's why I want to see the audit results. So I'm not saying that the person who prepared the CDA is, is two-and-a-half-year-old. Please don't miss the streaming. I'm just saying that. I'm just saying that the P and L, P and L shows nothing. So, P and L shows nothing.
I got a point, well, of information and maybe, yeah, if you can help with this. Wasn't there a ninety thousand dollar transaction from the CDA?
And there was also the lawsuit that was settled.
Yes, when the, so, when the, when the whole thing went down with the new board being appointed to the CDA, the CDA, because the city had missed like maybe six of those payments and at that time it rains like fifteen thousand dollars. So the CDA actually wrote a check for ninety thousand dollars to give those funds back to the city. One of the problems that I can remember, and it was a question that kept going back and forth, is that based on the law, it says that a CDA can create a budget and if they spend a certain amount of money, then at the end of the year, they are supposed to turn that money back over to the city. That question has never been answered and it's about two years since it had been out there. I know Brandon was, was working on trying to identify what was the answer to that question. But that was one of the things that was discussed because the law states that, that based on, they create their budget and then based on what they spend and if it covers all of their expenses and they don't have any bond indebtedness and that's out there, then at the end of the fiscal year, that was another argument. Is it going to be at the fiscal year or is it going to be based on the calendar year? That once all of the finances were final, then they would write a check to the city to give that money back to the city and start the fiscal year all over again, or calendar year.
Well, it looks like we got into a discussion more of the CDA than we did the candidates. And I think the key, we apparently have some work to do to clarify where we stand with what we should be doing. That was one of the reasons for the audit, was to look at operational parameters, seeing if we're following what's in state statute as well as what's in the bylaws of the CDA, as well as looking at the financial piece. Now, I'm a little disappointed at this point. We have not had a CDA meeting for this month called, for example, it would have been this Wednesday, but it hasn't been set up to be called to consider picking an audit firm and moving forward with that process. So it's just being delayed even more. I think it's important to have that in hand to look at what we may need to do.
Questions, questions for the attorney. Can the, can the council or president of the council call the CDA meeting?
No.
My question, Ms. Stewart says it is posted for the fifteenth. I have not gotten the notice.
Fifteenth of this month? To my thoughts, I saw something. Let me go look.
Okay, please.
Well, I could, I could.
Oh, it is right here.
I could clear it up that.
I gotta boost the.
Go ahead.
Watch your head.
Bring you the helmet.
Well, what's posted is that we finally got everybody together to review the videos of the different auditors. So, once those individuals watch those videos, we should be able to make our decision on Wednesday when our meeting is set up.
This Wednesday.
This coming Wednesday?
Yes.
But I did not receive a notice and I'm the liaison.
Well, I know notice was.
I didn't get a notice.
Yeah, I know, I know.
I didn't get one either.
I didn't get one either. I don't like that. I didn't get one.
Well.
I want one.
Okay, I mean, I should, I'll tell Dana to, to send another notice out. But, but.
This is our official notice. We know.
Well, you know, just, I know, everybody's saying you didn't receive anything, but oftentimes Dana sends out information and she doesn't get responses. So.
And I don't think I've ever failed to respond to her.
Yes.
Chair, what time and where? What time and where?
Eleven thirty at the CBA office.
Eleven thirty. Can you do eleven thirty?
I've got conflict now because I didn't see the post.
Y'all have an hour and a half. Yeah, when you pick up, when you pick one, you let us know.
Yes.
So who will be attending or are you going to be able to make the mail? Will there be a representative of the city? And lastly, that was on, was it on your calendar?
I have it on my calendar just because that's when it says.
That's the regular meeting. Had you received a notice?
So I have it set aside in case it is held.
But had you received a notice?
No, I did not receive a notice.
I'm not sure that it would be who would hold the meeting.
And, Councilman Bearden, the numbers that you're calculating may be a little skewed because the seventeen thousand dollar a month figure you're talking about has not been seventeen thousand dollars for the duration of time that you're talking about.
Okay, well, that was information that I was given from the city clerk.
Well, if he's, if he's giving you what the rate is now and you simply take it and do a, what, forty-eight-month calculation, then you're automatically going to wind up at eight hundred thousand dollars.
Yeah, what, what was it originally? Or when the CDA took over the?
I'd have to go back and actually get the form, but it was probably in the fourteen thousand something range and it graduated up.
Fourteen, fifteen.
Initially, it was, initially, it was fourteen thousand. The question that you asked me, you asked me, what was the rate at this particular time? And I told you that it was seventeen thousand because it went to seventeen thousand in June. When the city first began to keep up with how much the CDA was receiving, it was around fourteen-five, fourteen-six.
Okay. All right. Can you get, can you give me a, an amount of how much it was and what duration, when the increase was?
Right. I'll, I'll get together with Darrell Washington.
No way I'm getting my calc, updating my calculation.
If you would, Councilor Bearden, if you would email me, because I asked everybody, if you got any questions about any of the financials, please send me an email and I'll respond to that email so that everybody can get the information.
I'll be there tonight.
I have to do that. So whatever questions you all have, if you just email me those questions, I'll answer them and reply to all so everybody will have that information.
While we've still got everybody here, Councilor London, any comments on candidates? Go. We're talking candidates, okay?
That's what I thought. We spent the last third minute talking about finances, but we never said anything about candidates.
No, I mentioned, I mentioned my. Yeah, that's, well, that's the reason for me reading this. My response and my, you know, what I understood about the candidates.
Financial reasons.
Oh, and another point of clarification, Councilman Bearden, if I remember correctly, Darrell Washington's response was that he would be open to discussion. You might want to go back and check the video. I don't, I don't think he ever said that he was just against it, but that he would be open to communicate about it.
That is what Darrell said almost immediately.
Okay. So just point of clarification, because it seems that what you just shared was that.
Any questions concerning candidates?
I know all the candidates.
The performance of the board drives my decision of the candidate and the audit is part of the performance of the board, so I'm waiting for the audit.
Councilor Wilson, anyone? Councilor Wilson sent me a note about several items he would like to see us discuss in worse sessions. We want to just, real quickly, we'll try to decide how to get them on the calendar.
How real? Quickly. One item that I would like to propose to the council to put on the agenda for Thursday is to send out a R and P for a grant writer. There were some comments mentioned earlier about if this goes to referendum. You know, we have certain things or the community will like certain things done within the city. So therefore, I think we should just put everything on a mileage increase. I think we need to do our due diligence in seeing what money is also available out there for the city. And in order to do that, as of this time, we don't have a grant writer to go out and look at those things. So that's just one thing I propose. Not paying on the retainment, but at the same time, then we went out and see what's after the forest. Let's say if the, if the vote passes or whatever the case may be, I think we also need to kind of look and see what kind of money is out there for the city. Pay them on a, what, per grant basis or something like that we did during the last administration or something. Just wanted to get y'all's opinion on that.
I'm a hundred percent in grants with you, Boba Joe. The only problem I have is a lot of grants require some matches. So we've got to make sure that we've got the funding to apply to those matches. That's my only pushback on you. And the mileage might be necessary to participate in the matches. But yes, hundred percent agree.
Excuse me for moving a little bit too fast. Mayor, I did not ask you if you had any comment on candidates because you have to work with as close as anybody.
I, I know, other than what has been expressed in terms of, I think the audit is important. I think there are some concerns relative to, to practices and that, that audit may or may not, you know, bring out or confirm. And so I, I'm anxious to see that. I've pushed for that to be done for a number of months now, since spring. It has been delayed and delayed. I'm hopeful that, as we just heard tonight, that Wednesday they'll make a decision and get an auditor because, you know, when you're, when you're dealing with finances and delay is there, it only exacerbates, gets worse, raises red flags. So a whole problem with the last situation that they were in. The person who was involved in that couldn't, couldn't produce the financials, couldn't give the explanations and that sort of thing. So I think for everyone, I think information is, is good, knowledge is good to have that you can make the decision that you need to make. I do think whoever's appointed to that board, that board needs to work hand in glove with the city and needs to be complimentary, not competitive with the city. And so I think some of the things you talked about in terms of bringing the funding back to the city apparently has been agreed to by the board, the CDA board, I think is a good thing. I'm not sure, I've served on that, that CDA myself back in two thousand, two thousand one, two thousand, two thousand one with Mr. Stewart. And we didn't spend, we didn't spend four or five hundred thousand dollars during that time period because we didn't have it to spend and it wouldn't necessarily be useful to spend. That way, I think it should be used for economic development within the city. And our attorney has raised questions about some of the expenditures and whether they're authorized under the statute. There are some concerns there as well, which I'm hopeful that the audit will clarify.
It seems like the audit is still a key piece.
Yeah.
So we, so we're not, so what are you trying to find? Trying to find someone, somebody?
No, what I'm trying, what I'm trying to, I'm not trying to find anything on anybody. What I'm trying to, I'm trying to do what I think each of you, I think each of you are or should be. And as a fiduciary responsibility, we have a responsibility to make sure that anything related to the city is handled properly and, and done as it's supposed to be done. And there have been questions that have been raised, not, not just this year, but three years ago and four years ago and we've had issues. With the issues that you three who were on the council before have already been through, I would think you would be the, the champion of wanting everything out in full disclosure, wanting to know and hopefully being satisfied with it. But if you're not satisfied, I would think you would not want to be making the decision in the dark.
What I, what I would not be satisfied as a council though is trying to attack people that are on the CDA board. And that's, that's what it's coming down to, but that's okay. That's, that's one bridge under the water. We're talking about the candidates. Water under the bridge, bridge under the water. But I've seen some, if you live in a better state, you'll know what I'm talking about. But I've known Cindy a long time and I think Cindy does a great, great job for our city. I think she's a fantastic person for our city. She has nothing to do with the board right now. So, and we think she's a great candidate for the board. What does, whatever you find in audit has to do with her.
It basically gives everybody an even place to start.
Has nothing to do with her.
And, and again, as I said to Councilor Wilson at the other meeting, you're welcome to call the question at the meeting if you want to put that to a vote and see how everybody else on the council feels about it.
It has nothing to do with her.
But again, you can always call the question about waiting for the audit or not waiting for the audit.
The only position I was comfortable with at that time of when the question was posed was Aaron's. That was the only position I was comfortable with.
You was ready to vote for him and we haven't had an audit.
Only because he's been there for one year. He's been there one year.
You know, our president.
One year if you've served on.
Let's flip it around. Why are you opposed?
I'm not opposed to it. I'm saying, what you're, what you're saying, the audit has nothing to do with her, has nothing to do with Cindy.
It has to do with appointments that you're making.
Well, can we make that one appointment on her or?
I'm there.
You're a guy. I mean.
If Darrell, Darrell's been there for four years, there's an extensive amount of knowledge. If, as long as everything is copacetic, then why am I going to rob the CDA board of that existing knowledge?
So we are waiting on the appointment. So if there's nothing there, then we feel comfortable putting Darrell back in. So that's my question. Okay, you're answering my question.
I mean, I'm just, I'm just waiting for an audit.
That's the question I asked at the beginning.
It's our responsibility.
That question was two weeks ago. I've never got to answer. But you answered my question. The question you asked two weeks ago was why is that important? I just shared with you some reasons why it's important to me.
Well, I just shared why, why is it, you're affecting somebody else that may be part of this board that had nothing to do with, you're trying to find. That makes sense to me. That makes sense to me.
Okay.
Just like two thousand and two, he was on that CDA board, right? We're paying, two thousand and one, part of the car dealership, right? He's part of all that. Well, how much money are we paying them right now? And you talk about, you talk about what we owe that old city council and didn't have anything to do with it, but you was part of that, that CDA. The seven hundred thousand dollars that we owe them, you was part of that CDA. But now you don't make it.
Because, because that agreement that was made then was not followed through with in the subsequent years.
And you was part of the CDA and it's followed.
Two thousand and one, it did not follow.
You're part of the CDA, right?
Two thousand and one.
And we're paying for that today.
But again, we have the opportunity to put it on by calling the question at any of the regular meetings. At this point, I think the thing that came out in the audit is since the misappropriation of funds, the CDA has not had an audit. As David Cork explained, what they had was not an audit. It is way past due, just put out there for the option, as the councilor Spivey has stated. It doesn't take any additional effort on anybody's part to wait for that result and see where we are. And as a council.
Not, not.
And being fiduciary responsible.
So I, I will listen, Mr. President.
Being fiduciary responsible, I think we ought to opt to wait for that audit, see where we are. And we may even decide that we don't have anything right now where we need the CDA in place. That may be the other option. And just a minute, I'll recognize the mayor and then I'll see a hand over to my right. But the other thing is getting into this, mark your calendar for the first Monday in October, which is before our first meeting. We will officially have an economic development committee meeting in conjunction with the industrial board, if we can pull it off, and the CDA. Because we are talking about doing all of this and we've never set groundwork to say what we would actually offer a business that comes into the city. We also have that issue that has happened before where when we have the discussions in private or in public forum, word gets out and sometimes destroys the deal before it gets started. So we've got to figure out how to address issues like that. So we've got to lay some groundwork before we can even move forward because we've never had a standard package to say if you want to relocate here and you're in industry, we'll give you this, this, and this, but we'll negotiate. But at least something to get started. But that would be the Monday before the first council meeting in October.
October sixth.
Okay? So that'd be October second. So, that'd be October second. And that will be this, unless there's something real controversial on the agenda, that will be our purpose for the work session. And now, Mayor, did you have additional comments?
Yeah. Due to Mr. London's, um, challenge on, on the facts, let me, let me give you a few facts, okay? But I'll, I'll.
The story is not challenged, Mr. Mayor.
Sorry, let me, let me.
No challenge.
I think I have the floor.
No, just my comment.
I think I have the floor.
Because I have the right to speak, right?
Well, the great mayor's recognized right now, so when the mayor finishes, then you can move on.
Oh, just my comment.
A quick review by our auditor, the city's auditor, just, just to tell you why I have some concerns on, on some of the numbers. Uh, was a hundred and five thousand dollars was spent.
On what numbers? I'm sorry. Just wanted to be just see, what numbers you referred to?
I'm, I'm getting ready to give you the numbers, okay? The number, a hundred and five thousand dollars spent last year, two thousand fifteen, basically, was by the CDA.
Thank you.
Our, our auditor, to give you the full story, our auditor was originally told that he was to do the audit for the CDA. He started to do that, spent just part of one day, looked at a couple of accounts, and then was told by the chairman of the CDA that he was not authorized to do the, the audit and that, uh, he wanted, the chair of the CDA just wanted him to do what he'd always done, which is kind of look over the records. I was told when I came into office, and you all were told as well, that the problem with the theft that occurred four years ago had been resolved. I was told that by, by more than one person, that, that we put, we put checks in place, we put things in place to prevent that from happening. I don't believe we've done that. I was told that we've done that, but I don't believe that we put adequate checks and balances in place to do that. I'm not, I'm not saying that to, to reflect on anyone. I'm saying that as my opinion, in dealing with these kinds of things, I don't think we have. The problem that occurred four years ago was someone took a credit card or a debit card and spent money on personal items. And, and we know it's been through the court, it's not in dispute, uh, the person's been convicted of it and, and, and we know the outcome of that. I don't think, and I'm going to ask the city clerk here, does anyone here in this, this building, audit, not audit, but reconcile the credit card account, put expenditures that are on that account and receipts together to verify with documented receipts for what's there?
No.
No. That's exactly what, we've had a conversation about this before. No. The problem before was this person taking a credit card and misusing the credit card and spending about, what, eighty thousand, seventy some thousand dollars? And yet, we're all told, you all are told, we've got that all corrected now. I don't think we do. You just heard the city clerk say there's no one for the city that is doing that. We paid the credit card bill, but you have no idea, other than it's one line on there, BBNT, three thousand dollars, twenty-five hundred dollars, whatever it is, and we've not done it. So, to say that we, to say or to be under the, the, the impression that you are doing your fiduciary, fiduciary responsibility of overseeing this, we're not. We haven't. And, and, and if that, God forbid, that should happen again, and I'm not saying it has or that it will, but if it should, they're not going to come back and say, well, that's the CDA, that's a separate authority. They're going to come back and say, you said council and mayor, let that happen again. So, why are we afraid of an audit? Why do we not want to have an audit? We need to have the audit to do that. A hundred and five thousand dollars spent last year by the CDA. The auditor in that very brief time, our auditor in that very brief time that day that he looked at those accounts, looked at two accounts before he was pulled off the audit. He looked at two accounts. One of those accounts was one that is entitled sponsorships, which our attorney has told us is not an eligible authorized expense by the CDA. Seventeen thousand dollars in sponsorships, money handed out to different entities and agencies. I'm not saying that those are not good entities or good agencies or good organizations, but if it's not right, it's not right. It doesn't matter how good the organization is that the money's given to. Seventeen thousand dollars given out to sponsorships, non-eligible for the most part, according to our attorney. Eight, the second account that he looked at, eighteen thousand dollars was spent for meals and travel. Eighteen thousand dollars in one year for meals and travel. That's pretty good eating and that's a whole lot of travel, okay? I don't know. You know why I don't know, you know, why I don't know whether that's legitimate or not? It's because seventy-seven percent, seventy-seven percent of those, according to our auditor, were not properly documented expenses. I said, what does that mean when you say not properly documented? He said, either they have no documentation or they have inadequate documentation. They don't state what it's for and it was authorized by the board. Do you not have concern, though, just those two accounts, thirty-five thousand dollars of a hundred and five thousand dollars spent last year? And we don't know. The answer is, we don't know. We don't know if it's a problem or not. We don't know. Well, I wasn't finished.
Now, I, I'm wondering.
I'll stop when I'm finished.
No, no, go ahead. I mean, I, I just keep hearing the, the same, I, I don't think, go ahead, I'm sorry.
All I'm saying is, why be afraid of it? Why be afraid of it? Not only why be afraid of it, but you should be asking for it. You should be asking for it in your role as a city council member or my role as a mayor. It should be something that you demand, that you demand answers, so that not on your watch and not on our watch does that happen again. Now, I'm through.
I'll have to hang up for about thirty minutes.
I just want to make, I just want to make sure that everybody remembers. Before the, before this group of folks on the CDA, there was another group on the CDA, and an audit was done and somebody said, ooh, this looks like there's some expenses here that are not, um, are not kosher. Turns out it was like two hundred and fifty dollars worth of expenses. And Mr. Wilson, every single meeting brought it up. Every single meeting, what's our status on the lawsuit? What's our status on the investigation? What's our status on this? Every meeting. And now, he's not even saying anything. So, and, and what was, what was the outcome of that?
Nothing happened.
Exactly. Nothing happened. There was no, in a purpose.
There was no wrongdoing.
Exactly.
You're wrong. The ethics opinion stated that there was no evidence of any wrongdoing, John.
Oh, well. This, what is it? This is, this is.
Okay. We're not, we're not having an open debate, but.
But I just want to say, that's, that was two hundred and fifty dollars, two hundred and fifty dollars versus seventeen thousand dollars?
Thank you.
So, um, I'm hearing words like misappropriation. Who, who, who has said that funds have actually been misappropriated? Because just based on what our mayor just shared with us, we don't know. And that's why we need to do an audit. Okay? So, Councilman Reno, I think it's, I think it's unfair to those of us who are currently on the CDA, who, I, I'm one of the main ones that want to know down to the, to the last detail. I'm, I'm one of the main ones that if I don't understand something, I take it a step further to get full understanding. And for you, for you to make statements like misappropriation of funds.
Did I make that statement?
You, you just said.
Misappropriation.
You just, you just said it.
I did just then, yes.
No, 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 you said it before. That's why I raised my hand, because to the mayor's credit, he just explained very eloquently that we don't know. How can you say funds have been misappropriated if we don't know?
I referred to the Cheryl Daniels incident, sir, if you were listening, clerk.
No, I was listening very closely.
Well, I'm sorry, you must have misunderstood me then. Because I referred to the misappropriation. Would you play it?
Yeah.
I'll refer to anybody else. I thought I was referring to Cheryl Daniels incident when I mentioned misappropriation.
No, we were already finished talking about the Cheryl Daniels incident. We had come to the place where you were saying.
Your point is, sir.
Okay, no.
All we're talking about is.
You recognize me.
Are we going to move forward with the audit?
What I am saying is that I would appreciate it. I'm serving in a capacity that I was appointed to, you're serving in a capacity that you were elected to. I don't make any statements to offend or accuse anyone. I appreciate, I've shared on a number of occasions that I appreciate Leslie who comes and provides data to our Commercial Development Authority. There were some things we were working on in the very beginning that I didn't understand. And when she brought that data, there was a moment there that, you know, I did challenge her, but ultimately, what she shared with us, I fully accepted. And I have not challenged Leslie on anything since. Because like I said, I do appreciate, I was on the CDA before and I remember us having a city attorney that ran our meetings. What I also remember is that.
Again, let's, let's get back, sorry, sir.
I will, I will get back to it.
I'm in control of the meeting, do you mind? What is your point? What is your bottom point? Please, just make it, stop rambling. Just make your point.
You, you, you are not going to continue to be condescending to me.
Please.
I am not rambling, I am, I am giving out specific data just like, just like every other respectable person here.
Just continue, sir.
No, 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 see.
We got, we got enough tension in here, please, I'm asking both of you.
No, I, I, but that's, that's the thing. I'm not, there is no tension with me. There is no tension with me. I'm simply trying to share.
But let's just, he got control of the meeting, so let's just.
And you had something to bring up again, you were trying to.
I thought I did. I thought I did.
Does anyone else on the digest have any comments to leave us for? Mr. Wilson, would you finish your other three points?
Yes, real quick. Uh, talking about grant writer, I also would like to mention to the council, um, uh, two quick things. Um, Les and I have been going back and forth with Leslie, uh, as far as looking at our ordinance and some of the ordinances that the city has does not match state law. So, Leslie, you and I, hopefully we can get together along with the mayor. If we can kind of go through and look over some of those ordinances that we have now, uh, we could see and make sure they match up with state law. Some of the ordinances that I would like for us to consider, there's a lot of signs that's being attached uh, to these stop signs, to these different signs within the city. And, uh, it just looks tacky. So, if we could possibly come up with something, uh, with our ordinance and outlook also, but, um, Leslie, if you don't mind, these are some of the things that, that's really maybe a concern to some of the citizens in the city. Signs that are attached to, um, some of our stop sign posts or, or even, uh, what directional signs, street signs.
And we'll bring that up as a meeting of the Ordinance Committee at some point for one of our work sessions.
And last but not least, um, infrastructure. Uh, I think that's something else that, um, probably doesn't need to be a twenty or thirty minute discussion, but we have to come up with some kind of plan to talk about our infrastructure within the city. You mentioned that earlier. So, uh, just based on the revenue that we, uh, we received or we have, we need to kind of. I think that was, I think we need to kind of.
The RFP, the ordinance, the infrastructure.
Yeah, uh, signs, oh, and cars, I'm sorry.
Cars, yeah.
And cars, yes, yes, and cars and yards. Uh, I don't know how we can address this, but like I say, I'm kind of embarrassed. I do have a friend of mine that has several cars in his yard and a moving, and a moving truck.
Oh, man.
And, uh.
Do they all run?
Yes.
If they don't run, you can have them.
Yeah, they, they run.
You know.
But that's not the issue, it's just so many cars in the yard. And I know something came up during, uh, what, about two, three years ago, about parking cars in the yard and we had, the council was just flooded with people. So, we need to kind of revisit that because we do know that there are some people that have all these cars in the yard. They're selling them. So, we need to kind of address that issue and that's all.
And that original should be somewhere still on file, I think, from what was presented.
Yeah.
Can I mention something to the mayor while we, he mentioned the infrastructure. Uh, the Grace Mill Road between the construction site at, uh, Mercedes and, uh, Oleag Road, those big heavy trucks are going up and down that hill and they are just tearing up that road. There's two good sized, it, it, one place you can see where the road is actually slid off of the road into, towards the ditch and it's going to collapse if it's not taken care of.
We've, we've addressed some of that with them already.
Okay.
There are several places where we think that they damaged the road and we're, we're working on.
All right, there's a, there's another item, uh, Grace, I think it's Grace, uh, Tree Service in Alton is tearing up the roads over there. And, uh, we discussed this with the previous mayor and we had them go out and repair the road, but it's all torn up again. And I need to get with you about that sometime.
Yeah, and Terry, if you would send me information on that as well, I'd be helping for it.
No. Okay. Just a point of clarification, are you going to try to introduce a resolution on Thursday night for the RFP to, to the grant writer?
Yes.
So, that'll be, you're just going to do that as an addition?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Who's going to, who are they going to report to? Who's the grant writer going to report to?
Council.
Who on the council is going to be responsible for making sure that information's being got?
I mean, wouldn't that person roll to the mayor? I mean, if they're a city employee?
No, we're going to see your contract. We would, we would still have to have a workout on that, I would assume. Uh, this would be initially would be for a RFP and then I would assume he's terming the infrastructure to control the individual. Um, but, um, and you think you'll have enough to get us going forward? We're just, we're just voting to go forward with developing the RFP.
Right.
Okay. We don't have an RFP to present.
Yeah, when James ended out.
Okay, that's the, that nature.
Yeah, that's it.
We got a question.
Anything else on Thursday night's agendas before we close?
I know, Mr. Bob's got a question.
No, shoot.
I, I just have a question for, for Bobby Joe since he's public works. Uh, y'all had a study done on the sidewalks based on the federal, uh, statute, regulations that are coming out. Gave you ten years and I think they estimated three point two million dollars to do all the sidewalks in Irondale. Have you all talked about it, come up with some plan? And especially since, you know, the financial problem along with the ad lorum, have you, have you all gone that far or not, not yet?
That's, that's been going on for eight years now that I know of and we've paid engineers to redesign it three times already.
No, I'm not talking about Sixteenth Street there. I'm talking about you all had a study done and they came and did a report.
This is the ADA compliance.
It's the ADA compliance.
Yeah, that was, that was a time ago.
Well, you had ten years and I think we're down to nine almost now.
There's just a chance that period has been extended beyond that. The federal government is still trying to make up their mind. Uh, that is part, uh, the fortunate thing is, uh, what, we were over ninety percent.
Uh, the city made that decision for ten years. But we're looking at going out to maybe twenty years. They also have looked at some alternative methods. So, I don't know if you all remembered this group that came and shared with the city about how they could repair sidewalks without having to tear up the whole sidewalk. So, Frank has been in discussion, uh, with them about looking at some areas, Bob, just to see if we can start out to be able to improve some of those. So, I know that Frank has been, been working on that and the federal government says that as long as we are making an effort, uh, each year to eradicate some of the issues that we have, then they will give us additional time to be able to work on it.
Thank you, Mayor.
So, I'll, I'll tag on to that now, so I know what's actually happening, Bob. Um, we actually have identified a, a number of sidewalk points that can go through that process James just described. And so, should be before the end of fiscal year, some of those should be done. It's, it's a cutting down of the, where there, you know, one's here and one's there. The tripping hazards. And so, we're working on that to show that progress. I'm not sure why the city went with ten years instead of twenty. I don't understand that rationale, but, um, we should try to get to twenty to give us more time to spread the value, so.
Since, what, ninety something percent of our sidewalks are not in compliance.
Well, we were, I mean, when we did the study, we were six years behind because it's a twenty-ten, uh, it's a twenty-ten ADA. So, we were supposed to start in twenty-ten. So, since we were, were behind by so many years, Mayor, that's why we tried to speed up the process to be able to catch up, to be able to do some things within that. But since then, we've learned that they were.
But since then, we've learned that they will be more lenient, that as long as we are attacking the problem, they will give us the extra time we need to do it.
You should see some progress before the end of the year on some of those.
Out of curiosity, I'm, I'm going to assume the answer is yes, but are we making sure that the new houses and new sidewalks that are going in are ADA compliant? Because I know there's some, going forward, cool, because I know there were some that are relatively new that are not even correct.
Again, I can't, that happened a lot.
No, I get you, I just want to make sure we're, we're keeping our fingers on the pulse of the new sidewalks going in.
To the extent that you remember, they took out the sidewalks and they do a development in the valley, because they couldn't afford to eat, and the cars were slow, and so. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second?
Second.